Call this meeting in order, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's no changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, open forum. Is that even in the back? All right. We're out to consent agenda approval of the minutes, bills, purchase orders, approval of investments, fire department account bad debt, community festival license for the chamber. Then there's gambling resolution number 2021-15 for the Melrose area Chamber of Commerce. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion approved, second.
Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Fun part, we have presentations tonight for two ambulance members. Jen, can you give us a little history on them first?
All right, good evening, on behalf of the Melrose ambulance, on behalf of the Melrose ambulance, I would like to recognize two of our long-term members tonight, Brenda Winker and Randy Dufner, who have both went into retirement after 26 years. Randy, I hope I have that correct. Randy's been on 29 years and he had a small break in there, and Brenda's been on for 26 years. I'd like to wish you guys the best in your retirement, and I hope you enjoy your full nights of sleep. Mayor Finkin, can you present them with their certificates, please?
I will, I will. And I want to also say my gratitude to you two. You guys were both there longer than I was on the fire department, and especially with you two and Jen, we've been through some real things in our lives, a lot of crying days and, you know, happy days, but I wanted to just say thank you for everything that you've done, especially to make our lives as firefighters, first responders easier by having you so close. And I appreciate everything that you've done for our community, and thank you very much. And I was wondering if you could come up and take pictures with us, and I'll let you guys go so you don't have to sit here and listen to me babble all night long, so. Should we do it here?
Yeah.
Let's do it right here. Because they want to take one picture with all of us.
Right away.
With Tony.
Here, Brenda. So I can play shot, I think we all got our shots already, so.
Yep.
So Randy, you want to come in here also?
I've got my shot.
I did too. What I do is if you guys want to stand on either side.
Okay, we'll put you in the middle.
You're in the middle?
Yeah, I'll be in the middle. Trust me, you guys have thrown me around a few times, so yeah, here we go.
Did you get enough Carol?
Nope.
Twenty-four more to go.
Are we supposed to shake hands or something?
Oh, yeah, we can open the words and I can sort of hold on one last year too, whatever.
Sorry, grab you.
You've been doing this for a while, Joe, haven't you?
Trying to have a nice smile.
I hope.
Do the best you can, Joe.
Kissing the beans.
Just one more, please.
I think Carol has one if you miss it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Best. Thank you.
And also, I just, you know, thank you to the families. I do know what you go through at nights and, you know, during all of our anniversaries, birthday parties and everything else, at least you'll be able to enjoy them there for those special moments, so I am jealous of you on that part of it. So again, thank you very much, okay? All right, we're on to reports. Chief Mouse?
Good evening. Our March 2021 statistics in traffic area, we had 36 citations, 117 verbal warnings, three written warnings. For March 2021, we had 376 calls or requests for service. Last year we were at 278, and we ended last year at 895 for calls, and this year at 1,009. So we are seeing a slight uptick in the month of March, which was our partial shutdown, so we'll see what the numbers look like for the rest of the year. We had 30 agency assist calls for the month. Some areas to highlight ATV and golf cart permits, they can be renewed any time during the year or gotten any time during the year, but they're good from the first of the year till the 31st, so take advantage of that. If you have a golf cart, you need a slow-mo vehicle sign, rearview mirror insurance, and then you can get a permit issued for $25. ATVs, you have to have an active or current DNR registration, and then you just receive the permit. So make sure people are calling in for that, and we'll get those taken care of. We're up to, I think I did number 17 or 18 today, so moving along with those. I did look into the bowfishing situation that Councilmember Claussen had a question about. There is the ability to create an ordinance related to restricting or prohibiting whichever way the ordinance decides to read, related to bowfishing within the city limits. So if that's something that the council wants to research or get into, we'd have to adopt the ordinance and go through that whole process related to that, but for the most part, we follow the DNR's rules related to firearms and projectiles and anything else in the city of Melrose, so we don't have a specific ordinance or a separate ordinance that says you can't, you know, use your bow in your backyard or anything like that or anywhere else in the city limits. So as long as they're following whatever the DNR rules are for distances, then it's permitted within the city.
Okay.
So that's about all I have unless there's any questions from the council.
Not really, I'll just add a little bit to the bowfishing deal. I would imagine that there will be a couple of people contacting you or the city or something asking to get put on the agenda eventually, but I do know that like around Lake Minnetaka, there's a lot of communities that border Lake Minnetaka, and they all have, quite a few of them have ordinances saying you can't, whatever, bullfish, whatever, whatever their regulations say, but if we ever did get to that point, I mean, I'm sure we could ping them and find out how they set up their ordinance and stuff to make it a little simpler, but anyway, just throwing that out there, but wait to hear from some of the residents, so.
Well, Chief, I just want to say thank you for all you do for our community, especially in the limelight of what's going on in the world. Thank you to you and your police officers for your hard work, working with our communities, working with our citizens, and I appreciate you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
So you turn your report, Scott.
Okay, a couple of items. Earlier this evening, you received your auditor's report, and just to note that, you know, every year the auditor asks me for a letter, and what they're really concerned about is that I might know something about a claim that might be out there that wouldn't show up on the books, but would affect the city's finances if it went against the city. And every year I send them a letter saying, no, I'm not aware of anything like that, and that gets incorporated into the audit, so that's part of the process, and you'll see that, that's why I listed that in my report, and that's why they ask. The other item taking up a lot of time is the Bonner nuisance. And we had a hearing on March, I want to say 19th, should have jotted the date down. It was a Zoom hearing, and at that point, I had filed a motion on behalf of the city asking the court to find that they were in default and to issue some reinforcement order. At the hearing, the court denied, wouldn't let it go by default, and set it on for a trial. So the trial is scheduled for May 11th. Prior to the trial, there'll be a pre-trial hearing, which is usually the attorneys and the judge kind of working out, you know, a plan for conducting the trial. Last week, I got a motion from Bonner's attorney that he's asking to be heard at that pre-trial, and in that, it's a motion asking that the court dismiss our request for abatement, you know, some reinforcement, and that the city of Melrose be ordered to issue building permits It's part of the process. I was a little surprised that they would go to the expense of doing that, but, you know, we'll deal with it. I've been working on, you know, by them filing that motion, and I have to prepare a response, and I've been working on that, and we'll get that filed tomorrow. I don't expect, I would be, I should say, I would be surprised if the judge grants that. I expect that this will then go to trial, and we'll get a decision from the court after the 11th. So update on where that is. So, like I said, any questions? I guess I don't think anybody should be surprised that they're fighting this every step of the way.
So, now if the judge goes in our favor, can we go after them for wasting our time and all the costs that has incurred to the city?
I'll have to look at, I think, I don't believe we'll be able to recoup and charge them for all of my time, unfortunately.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Scott. Community Development Director update, Lisa?
Good evening. On your agenda tonight is the Wentzman Street vacation. The Planning Commission heard this back in January, Public Utilities Commission also recommended approval in February. The council hearing was opened on April 15th, and then extended to allow mandatory time for the DNR to have input on the vacation. There has been no input, although we have attempted to reach them and have sent mandatory notice. And we've not heard any complaints from anyone regarding the proposed vacation. The Planning Commission, at their meeting later this month, will hear a variance related to JTEK requesting a rear setback, a budding the trail, they're looking for a 10-foot setback for a storage shed located at 500 Riverside Avenue. And then they're also requesting an existing easement that was for a potential right-of-way. It was dedicated back, I think in the 90s, connecting across the trail just west of, kind of by Rearing's, that end of town, and that is never going to have a road connection, so staff's reviewed it and is recommending that that 66-foot easement be reduced to 30 feet. So that would be on the agenda for next month for the city council. Also on the agenda for the Planning Commission later this month and the council next month is an ordinance change regarding modifying several sections of zoning code related to potentially increasing the lot coverage for R1 and R2 residential. It's currently at 30%, it was 35 or 40% previously. There was a discussion about whether that ought to be increased a bit. Also the setbacks, we currently have a combined setback, we had a variance last month, as you probably recall. Most cities just typically have just their straight setbacks, and there's really no need to duplicate the requirement by calling it out as a combined setback, so it would be just removing the language, the ordinance inherently does not change in that regard. There was also discussion about potentially changing the accessory structure requirements. Currently accessory structures, there's allowed to be two accessory structures on the property, which inherently penalizes anyone who has a detached garage because that's one of their two structures. So language is proposed that would allow one primary garage plus two additional accessory structures, regardless of whether the garage is attached or detached. So that's kind of the gist of that. And then it was noted that there is no exterior building material standards currently for the public institutional zoning district, and so some language has been put together regarding that, kind of a variation of what the commercial regulations allow with perhaps a little bit more flexibility, especially on the non-street sides. So that will be on your agenda for next month. This will be my last city council meeting, so thank you for the opportunity to work with me.
Well, thank you for all you've done, Lisa, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City engineer report, Mr. Mike?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The chip seal contracts have been returned to the city for signature, so we expect to get that going as soon as the road restrictions are off. I haven't actually contacted, or they haven't contacted me regarding a fixed schedule or pre-construction meeting yet, but they did say that they wanted to get started fairly soon. The county road 65 drainage improvements, we've been continuing negotiations with Anderson Underground. I think we should be coming to a conclusion on that here in the next week. 2020 street improvements, Mark Lee needs to come in and do the final cleanup, check concrete, that type of thing, and that'll also happen as soon as road restrictions come off. And the Fifth Avenue storm sewer design, we're at a point right now where we've determined that we do need a pond. There are a couple of different locations. We'll be zeroing in on the size of the pond and finding a preferred location for that pond, and then meeting with the affected property owners to get easements or purchase land for that purpose. And also, we did an engineer's estimate to extend sewer water, storm sewer and street on daylight court to finish out the five remaining lots in the north end of the plat, but it appears that this time the developer won't be taking any action on that. So, our last item for discussion is the road dam and bridge project. The roadway plans are coming along, I think we've completed the water main design now for the river crossing. The 60% plans will be submitted, I think, by Friday of next week. The structures, the bridge preliminary plans were submitted to the bridge office on March 22nd. The draft dam repair plans are expected to be submitted mid-April, so again, probably by the end of next week. And then the channel and bridge construction staging will be included with the roadway plan, so at that point, we'll be able to look and kind of figure out, you know, at what point does the bridge come down, what point do we start excavating the new channel, when do we flip over to the new channel. So, the stream analysis is continuing with the DNR, couple of minor issues I think they want us to look at yet. And they did submit a draft of the existing and proposed conditions for the hydraulic analysis for the DNR review. So permitting, they're starting on permitting with the Corps of Engineers and the DNR at this point. And the grant funding, the LCCMR grant was submitted. We need to have further discussion on the potential grants from the watershed, and then the SWCD as they relate to the vegetation type and campground finishes, those types of things. So that's all I've got, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. All right, Colleen?
The legislator is back in session after their Easter break, and they started budget negotiations pretty earnestly through their May 17th deadline. That all happened, and then they had some additional civil unrest down in the cities, so the budget's actually kind of taken a backseat to what has now become their main issue, which is police reform. There's a flurry of bills and activity related to that. When they are able to get back to the budget, right now, the Senate is proposing a 51.9 billion budget with no tax increases. The House version is about 52.5 with some tax increases. The bonding infrastructure bill is probably the biggest sticking point when it comes to what they want to do with the budget. As far as the city goes, the two items that we are most interested in are bonding, primarily bridge bonding dollars that we need in order for us to do the RDB project perhaps this year, or start it maybe. So that's one of the areas that we're watching very closely. And then we have asked for an extension for the sales tax exemption and the fire remediation grants that encompass a 400 block in the craft lot. I testified, and I think I probably mentioned that last month before committee on that, that's included in the huge Ombudsman bill, so not sure where that's going to end up. The American Rescue Plan is going to, we're still waiting on guidance from that as well. Again, we are going to get between 360,000 to 405,000 or 6,000 perhaps, and we'll just have to see how that guidance comes out. Later on on the agenda, I do have three action items that will need to take place. So just to give you a little bit of the background, myself and Tessa have been meeting with Julie and Jen. Jen Tishida's ambulance coordinator, and Julie Albright is the assistant ambulance coordinator. And what we have been talking about is making changes to the ambulance department. The proposed changes include, it's really expanding the leadership roles, so right now you have a coordinator and assistant coordinator, and what we are looking at adding is a training officer and a secretary. The ambulance coordinator is actually a paid department head position that reports directly to the city administrator. The assistant coordinator is a position that is appointed every two years by the council. The additional positions of training officer and secretary would also be appointed by the council. So typically what would happen is if they get applications in, then a team from the, similar to what the fire department does, a team, you know, from the ambulance department actually interviews those folks, and then there's recommendations that are brought forth. You guys typically will make those appointments at your first organizational meeting in January. However, with these changes, the ambulance department really doesn't want to wait until January because, you know, I think there's some really good momentum right now, and some really good excitement around what is going to be happening with the department. So what they would like to do is to get these positions in place starting July 1st, and so what they're recommending is a couple different things. One is the assistant coordinator would be a two-year appointment, and then four years after that time, when I say two is technically two and a half because if they start in July, but then it would rotate correctly and be in lining with all the other positions. And then the training officer could be a four-year appointment, and the secretary would be a two-year appointment. So, and then the other thing, they have a medical director. Typically, the medical director does not come to the meetings, but the Dr. Bestie, who is the medical director, has agreed to attend meetings on a more regular basis of the ambulance department. Just to keep in mind, the ambulance department operates as an enterprise fund and is self-sustaining. I believe you heard in the audit kind of where those enterprises were at, and one of the things were the budgets. The ambulance is in a very good position right now, and they have a very healthy fund balance. So later on in the agenda, we would be looking at approval for additional two more ambulance position, leadership positions, and then there also would be looking at approval for wages. The proposed wages are, the coordinator would remain where the coordinator is at right now, the assistant coordinator would be changed to $5,000 a year, the training officer would be $2,500 a year, and the secretary would be 500 a year. The increased medical director pay would go from 500 a year to 2,000 a year. So that is what is proposed. And again, these will be action items further down on the agenda. I would say that if you have any questions, you know, Jen and Julie are both here, or myself, we'd be more than happy, or Tessa, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding that. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, is that as more and more folks obviously get vaccinated, we are seeing things open up. We're also seeing COVID cases rising somewhat, so like anything else, we're continuing to watch it. A lot of people are getting vaccinated though, and that's a very good positive thing. So my messaging really is just we have to remain agile in terms of how we do with it. So I think we're doing a very good job, and we'll just continue to keep doing what we're doing. So that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. If anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain those questions.
You good?
Good.
All right. We're on to seven, continuation of a public hearing. It is 6:30 PM. Do we need to speak more about it, or?
We can show you a map if that would help you at all.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry. So this gives you a map that shows you.
So you can see on the left-hand side, Fifth Avenue is proposed to be vacated, and on the right-hand side, you can see the sort of North South hash mark that's going to be replacing that road rightway with an easement for city utilities. And then that will extend further than the existing Fifth Avenue South corridor into the vacated Seventh Street corridor and connect with the existing utility easement that goes east, south, or east-west. So what was before you tonight is both vacating Fifth Avenue and accepting an easement along Fifth Avenue and connecting to the existing easement on Seventh Street.
Okay. So I'm just checking, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against, or have any questions? Now would be the time for anybody that would like to speak up. Okay, we're all good. Well, 6:31, if nobody wants to say anything, we can close this now, right, Scott? Okay. Can I get a motion to close this meeting?
So move.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is closed. All right, we are on to action items. So it's going to be resolution number 2021-14, a resolution vacating a street, Third Avenue Northwest, located south of the current Fifth Avenue Northwest, and also East Street Northwest upon petition of the majority of the budding landowners. It was okay. If there's any further questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And then, do we have to do anything else with this, or everything's good on it then?
Yeah.
All right. All right, temporary summer and seasonal worker. Do we have any questions or concerns about that? Looks like a rehire from last year.
Right.
So can I get a motion to approve the rehire of Sam Reilin for the 2021 summer help seasonal worker?
So move.
Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Toro Grandmaster 410 lawn tractor. Do we have any questions about that at all?
I'm just curious, you know, we used equipment. Gary, do you know how many hours around that one by chance?
36 times.
Okay. It's quite a few hours, but it's diesel engine, right? So they go.
We had the engine auto ready.
Auto jet.
It started to, you know, started to show a lot of air.
Oh, is it? My only, my only question is, you know, trade-in is 95, maybe?
Second.
First and second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. And then, do we have to do anything else with this, or everything's good on it then?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Temporary summer and seasonal worker. Do we have any questions or concerns about that? Looks like a rehire from last year.
Right.
So can I get a motion to approve the rehire of Sam Reilly for the 2021 summer help seasonal worker?
So move.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Toro Grandmaster 410 lawn tractor. Do we have any questions about that at all?
I, I'm just curious, you know, you know, we used the equipment. Gary, do you know how many hours around that one by chance?
3600.
Okay. It's quite a few hours, but it's diesel engine, right? So they go.
We had the engine order.
Oh, did you?
It's starting to, you know, starting to show a lot of.
Oh, is it? And my only, my only question is, you know, trade-in is 95, maybe, you know, touch, not that the golf course would be interested in something like that, but 9,500 compared to 100,000 hours for a new one. Maybe somebody would be interested locally to pick that up as a backup or something, but I'd.
I asked a couple people in the fire, including Sturms County.
Okay.
They weren't interested, but also I reached out to the vendor, and I asked them to all trade it in. So what happens when you take this in, they have to put both of you both through.
Right.
And they'll probably stick another.
Two, three grand into it, and then they still got to make some money on it.
And have to sell.
Right. Right. So that's always my, you know, if somebody's interested in picking something up like that for trade-in, whatever we're going to get for trade-in, that's always something we should be open to, I think. You know, locally, whatever. So I'm, I'm fine with the purchase and trading it in, but I don't think the golf course would be interested in it. That's a big machine, huh?
It's a vessel.
That's pretty big.
I mean, that's, you know, if you want to do a positive.
Well, they run, I mean, they run bigger ones at the golf course.
Yeah, I don't know. I can, I can make a phone call real quick and ask them if they have any interest, but if we're open to that.
You know, we did that with the loader.
Yep.
Only issue with selling it outright, they come back to you.
Yep.
Worm spot or loader, and we traded it in, and they wanted the vendor, so we were.
Gotcha, right. So their name is on the last, owner's, yeah, gotcha.
So would you like to make your motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to go forward with it. I mean, if we have interest, we can always.
I'll second it.
Right?
Okay.
There were actually three separate actions.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, so this motion, it was a first and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Yeah, I, I see aye, that's why I was wondering, so, okay. The application was received by the city clerk. Let's see, how else?
It's a.
All right, so which one, okay, we did the first one. Second, authorized recording the notice of completion and proceeding for vacating the street.
So move.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Dedication of the utility easement along the eastern 15 feet of the proposed street vacation connecting south beyond the vacation of Third Avenue Northwest to connecting the existing 10-foot permanent drainage to utility easement across the part of the vacated Seventh Street North, originally dedicated as Second Street North in the plat of HJ Haskamp Edition. Can they get a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second.
Do you have, on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Yep. Front desk reception temporary. Do you want to take that one?
I'll test this.
Or Tessa?
Good evening, Mayor and the council. We have an administrative staff that will be taking a 12-week leave this summer due to being down now two positions. We're requesting to hire a temporary position to fill this. They would start approximately May 17th and run approximately 12 weeks from there. So this person would be responsible for answering the phone, working with the customers, taking utility payments, and so on.
Okay. Do you have any questions, or is, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve that temporary receptionist position.
Okay. Second, okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Additional ambulance positions, who would like to talk?
Well, we've already kind of talked about everything, unless Jen had any more to add. Otherwise, it's just a matter of the recommending to the council. And by the way, the one thing I did not mention is the ad hoc committee did meet and discuss these changes and is supportive of the changes. Recommend that the city council approve the addition of two more appointed ambulance leadership, leadership positions, training officer and secretary.
Is there anything, Jen, do you have questions on, or?
I was just wondering, has the Job Description Act application packet been created? I know you're kind of trying to accelerate this, and I can understand the reason behind it. Is there?
Yep, so, and we've met quite a few times on this and kind of did a lot of brainstorming. And we do have a meeting next week, and I kind of want to do an anonymous survey. There's one piece of it that we're still questioning, and I do want to have, you know, allow the members to have, you know, their opinion count as well. And the piece that we're questioning is whether or not that training officer, because they will, like, the training officer role will come up in two years, and then two years later, the assistant, so that they're not two new people at the same time. Because for me to train in two new people into those roles will be tough. And so they'll, like, the assistant will be there for two years when the new training officer starts. Then when the assistant is done, the training officer will have been there for two years. So kind of rotate those through. The question that I have for the department is, do we want that training officer role to roll right into the assistant or not? And I kind of just want to get a feel for what their thoughts are, because I go back and forth, you know, the assistant, Julie, she does a great job, and, you know, everybody has different availabilities to be able to help. And so not everybody would be able to go from that training officer to that assistant position. So I just want to kind of get that survey out. But we've worked, the job descriptions are pretty much done. We've kind of worked through some of that already. I work with NREM T recertification, so the training officer would follow that. We kind of have everything pretty much clearly written down what they'd be responsible for. And we'll, you know, make those last-minute changes. We've asked all the members to give their input on what they would like to see happen with all of these positions. So I think we're pretty close to being ready outside of anything that comes up at our meeting next month. It'll be good to see or to have a few more people that are, you know, people don't understand the work that is done behind the scenes. You know, when decisions need to be made, you know, you can't ask for 20 people. You guys know that. You can't ask for 20 people's opinion because you're going to get 20 different opinions. And so it'll be nice to have a couple more members involved to see how some of the decisions are made on the department, and especially as it comes to the training, which is becoming more and more with the national certification that everyone has to have.
Yeah. Whatever works for you.
We don't know how this will work. I can, I only see positive changes. And as far as the future of, you know, the department and leadership, this will allow for more people to be involved. And if there's changes that are made, I've been doing this a long time, probably the longest coordinator, I think. And so to be able to have more people in that leadership role and to know how some of the things happen. It was, it's kind of interesting because we asked for members' suggestions and feedback, and I got a lot. And, you know, some of them wrote things like, oh, you know, we should do this, we should do this. And I kind of giggled because every one of them I could check off are roles that either I take care of already or Julie does. So it'll be nice to, for as busy as we are, to have a few more people, you know, if people miss a meeting, to know that there's a training officer that's going to meet up with them, and that doesn't just fall on us, so.
Just a, just a thought here, if there's concerns with job descriptions or something, we could, could do something like contingent on, like the ad hoc committee reviewing the job descriptions or something to that effect also. You want to just start this in July, right? So it gives us a couple months to finalize stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I know we normally start January 1, but to kind of dream about this and plan for this and wait till January, you know, we've got the excitement of the members right now. We've had a lot of change. We've had some members retire, we've had some new members start. We've completely changed, I've completely changed the way our meetings are running. So there's a lot of momentum, like Colleen said, and Dr. Bestie's excited for the changes. Really what we did was we took the assistant job description and pulled all the pieces as far as the reporting structures and things that needed to be, and then kind of what the responsibilities of the secretary would be, added those in into that one, and then what the responsibilities of the training officer would be, and then added those into that one.
Okay. Any other questions? Someone make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it. I don't know if it really needs to go through.
Yeah, probably not. The, the job descriptions are working, they'll take care of it, so I'll second it.
All right. First and second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then, and thank you, Jen, for you and Julie for all you do. Then the wages, can I get a motion to approve the wages?
The secretary role, is that, I mean, I just see the 2,000, 2,500, 5,000. Is 500 before we approve it? Is that, I don't know what that, if that's a very minor role?
Yeah, so.
But just a little bit to.
Yep, yep, so the secretary role will, I didn't bring that with me, Tessa can refresh me, but really what the secretary will do is take minutes at our meetings. So they'll be responsible for taking the minutes, sending those out to all the members afterwards.
Mail, the, the agenda, I think, don't, I think it'll send out.
There's like three things, and it's just really that month. Probably like a half hour to an hour of work.
Okay.
I'm missing one thing, but.
No, that's fine, I just, I mean, all the other ones seem higher, and.
Yeah, and.
Just wanted to make sure that.
Yep, yep, and that one, the nice part about that is anybody, you know, we also put with them minimum years of being on the department, and secretary would be just after the six-month probationary period. Anybody could do that one.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, you got this first and the second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. On the old business, 2021 street improvement projects.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, bids were open for the 2021 street improvement project. Last week, Wednesday, we received six bids. Mark Lee excavating of Alexandria was the low bidder with a grand total bid amount of $149,065. The engineer's estimate for the project was $156,266, and we are recommending award to Mark Lee in that amount. Mark Lee is the contractor that had the project last year and did great work, so we're totally fine with their bid numbers. So the bids did range from $149 up to $177,000. Any questions?
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Colleen, you just wanted to talk about COVID real quick?
Not really, I kind of already covered it. There's, I was just kind of waiting for some guidance to come out of the state. We were hearing that we were going to get some additional guidance, but it didn't happen, so. It's, status quo right now. We'll let you know if anything changes.
Okay.
I do want, actually, there is something that's really positive that I do want to point out. It was last week, the Latin Economic Development Council from the cities came up here because they wanted to get the Latin community to take the vaccination, so they had 88 people that came in and got that vaccination from the Latino community. So that was very good. They had interpreters here, and so it was very positive.
Okay. That's awesome. Did you have something to say?
I should probably just keep my mouth shut.
Thank you. All right, there is no new business. Information items, utility commission, meeting minutes, first quarter ambulance report, comprehensive annual financial report. Nothing else, can I get a motion?
You might want to, there's an award for that Taffo report, isn't it? It's supposed to be presented.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, we did receive a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the city of Melrose. And for the most part, thank you, Tessa, for all you do for, for our financials. You make everybody's job a lot easier, so thank you for that, okay? So, all right, anything else? Otherwise, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can I get a second? Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Meeting adjourned.